Mr. Parker? We're good? Okay. All right, the time is now eight twenty-six PM and we're back in public session. First item on the agenda is... Oh, sorry.
New hires.
Wait a minute. Introduction of new hires. Ms. Pineda, do we have any new hires?
No new hires.
And if the board would permit, I'd like to deviate from the agenda to introduce our new district clerk. Ms. Patricia Pineda.
Thank you.
Do you want to say hello and introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for the very warm welcome. Very excited to be here.
Patricia Pineda is a resident of the community and a parent of four. She currently had... Well, she have a recent grad and you currently have a fifth grader, right?
Right.
Okay, so welcome and thank you. We have had changes in district clerks recently and hopefully we keep Ms. Pineda for a while. Today is her first night with us, so we're not going to be too late, right, guys? Great, okay. Let's move forward. Next, we have public comments. Ms. Pineda, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. I thought we had the ex officio thing before. I don't know. Yes, it's Ms. Shaw. Thank you. Oh.
He hasn't returned yet. We told him that he'd be out at eight o'clock, but he hasn't returned yet.
Oh, okay. So we're going to hold it then, Pineda? Great. Next item on our agenda is budget presentation, but I'm actually... I thought we moved up our ex officio report to ahead of the budget present and policy presentation, if I recall. We didn't. I thought we intended to. Okay. Budget report. Ms. Raymond.
So, do you want to do it from here? Do you want to go down there with the...
Is there a handout?
There is. And we put one in, right? Loaded one to board ducks. But I do have... But I didn't know what you wanted to do because Luke, the public can still see it even if they sit here.
Yeah, if you guys first... If you guys just watch, go through it basically. Basically, you don't have to.
Okay, great. So let's try that.
Okay.
That way, we don't have to.
So I mean, it's not a long presentation. If you remember at the finance committee meeting, I believe?
Budget workshop?
Right. Somebody asked... Some community members had asked some questions and you asked me to put something together for tonight to address that.
Thank you. Oh, you have one? Thank you. Okay, so the community can see it with the... Do we need to put the thing down or... No? Okay. It's on the screen. Great. Wonderful. All right, Ms. Raymond, take it away.
Okay. So, you had asked to... We had spoken about it and we thought that maybe if we did presented that now what the budget was in a three-part budget, that maybe people could understand the three different components. So, the three components are administrative capital and program. Under administrative, that covers school board, superintendent's office, all administrative costs, salaries and benefits, data processing, public information, legal fees, anything that's outside of curriculum. Capital is basically buildings and grounds, debt service, any capital inter-fund transfer costs if you are going to designate any of those funds. And then the program component covers all of the related expenses for instruction, teacher, teacher assistants, teacher aides, nurses, OT, speech, PT, psychologists, guidance counselors, all of those salaries and any other instructional costs. So if you look at this slide that says twenty-five, twenty-six, three-part budget, I just list them as the administrative capital and program and I show you a comparison of the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six to what was the twenty-four, twenty-five. And you'll see that the total comes down to the eighty-four million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which is currently the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget. Compared to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget of eighty million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars, which is what this year's budget is. But then the question was, well, how is the program component broken out by school? So if you look at the next page, I broke it out by program, by building. So you'll see that I broke it down from early childhood, Leif Jackson, Hyview, Richard J. Bailey and Woodlands Middle High School. And you can compare what the expenditures were for this year versus what is proposed for next year by school. You'll see that the largest of all of the expenditures, so total program component for this coming school year, what is proposed is sixty-six million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. Okay? The largest is for Woodlands Middle High School. That has more grades, that has sports, that has extracurricular activities. So that would be the larger of all of the components of the schools. Okay? And then on the next page, I just remind everybody what the proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six is. It's a three point eight four percent increase budget to budget. And the tax levy was a four point zero six percent increase from this year to next school year. Anybody any questions?
You want to ask them now or you want them at the end?
Well, we're on the questions page.
Yes, trustee Valen?
I'm pretty... I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but I just want to verify. We're looking at the general fund budget, so when we look at these... The program component for early childhood program, that's...
That's just...
Not including the federal or state funds.
Correct. This is just the general fund budget. This does not include UPK, Head Start. That...
Or any third-party funding.
That goes to a different fund.
Okay, thank you.
The program component includes all of the instructional, all those salaries that I named. Also includes transportation and it includes the federal fund inter-fund transfer. That all gets budgeted under the program component.
Yeah. Yep, thank you, Ms. Raymond. My question is, in terms of actuals being tracked to budget for this year, how are we trending in that light? Are we kind of getting closer to what we projected or do you foresee that yet?
I haven't done that by comparisons to this.
Yeah.
I can do that, but I haven't done it here to date. I have it, but I haven't done it to speak to it right now.
Right, because it's July to June thirtieth, I think, right, the time? Okay. All right.
Um, I... Then there's a question. No. I have a question. I first want to thank you for breaking it down by school. I know some parents wanted to see that. I'm sure they want a little more detail on particular things by school. I don't know what those are, so I'm not going to ask about those. But I was just looking at the budget of page three, I think, which is the three-part program budget breakdown by school. And with the proposed budget, it looks like the early childhood program, we have one million, two ninety... Two ninety-one.
Eight hundred and twelve, yeah.
So Leif Jackson has two grades. So I just quickly did some math, which is like nothing, but... So it's a little, almost five billion per grade. Program.
If you want it divided by two, yes.
Yeah. And I think Hyview's kind of the same. Bailey's a smidgen more. It's actually like a couple thousand over five million. And then, excuse me, Bailey is just under one million.
Just around that.
And then Woodlands is just a little bit over five million, which is a couple of thousand. So even though Woodlands' budget seems like a lot more, it's six grades.
Correct. Correct. So... And you have to remember, there's other things, sports.
Right.
Extracurricular activity. There's more at the high school than there is at the middle.
So I'm wondering actually if Woodlands is paying less for grade ironically because of the additional stuff like sports and extracurriculars. Then both the other programmatic stuff that is at K through six, is... Are we paying less for that programmatic stuff? Since we're paying into the athletics and extracurriculars and all other bells and whistles that you get when you get to high school.
I have something to add.
AP, IB.
So, if you just want to talk about instruction, program and instruction?
Yeah.
For Woodlands Middle High School, it is seventeen point six million.
Seventeen point six? For program and instruction? And Bailey is six... Is fourteen?
Bailey... No, no. Bailey, just for program and instruction, is eight point two.
Eight point two.
You've got to remember, transportation, district and contracted transportation.
Got it.
Benefits and inter-fund transfer for federal funds is all included in this number.
Okay. Do you have Hyview and Leif Jackson's too?
Yeah.
What's that, please?
So, okay, so ECP.
Uh-huh.
Just program.
Yeah.
Seven hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine.
Okay.
Elef Jackson, five million, eight eighty-two, seven sixty-four.
Okay.
Hyview, five million, eight eighty-eight, eight sixty-six.
Okay.
Bailey, eight million, two thirty-five, oh seven two.
Okay.
And Woodlands Middle High School is seventeen million, six oh five, nine ninety.
Okay, thank you. So I'll do some more dirty calculations, but that's helpful to look at how much we really spend in each building. Any other questions?
And then if you just keep going on the presentation, then it's morning meeting. Hopefully you'll have some more concrete, steady figures by then. They, you know, should have a budget by you first because that their year ends on Monday, but I encourage anything new, wherever you're going with the school budget, that has to be approved before the steady figures are finalized.
So I did want to bring up something that I think I mentioned before. I haven't seen in any of the drafts. I'm just wondering what happened to it? The human resources position or option for more support with human resources?
We did not include it in the budget this year because it would have been a significant increase in the tax levy.
What happened to the option to do some sort of... Is there like a Bozzi's coaster or something? I don't know if that's Ms. Raymond or Dr. Njoku or even our legal would know.
There may be a Bozzi's coaster. I can look into that.
I just think we need some help with all of our hiring. I think that would really free up the assistant superintendents to focus on their specific areas and not necessarily, you know, definitely, you know, the general background checks, references and all of that, but really scrutinizing who we bring into the districts so that we get the very best talent. Brooke, yes, trustee man?
Yeah, no, just thinking about the budget. Ms. Raymond, I know a lot of chatter's been going on about the elimination of DOE and its financial impact to the district. Have we been talking about that at all or...
All of our organizations are talking about it, but nothing is actually out there yet. So we don't have anything that's concrete or anything that we can anticipate or have to budget for.
What about ECP? I don't know if that... Well, that's for you and Dr. Njoku because it's a...
That would still be part of all of that, right, Dr. Njoku?
Yeah, it's all federally. Not all.
Not at all.
Because we moved some of it under us, but...
The same in speaking with representatives and others, they said move as and plan as you are going to get the same funding. So nothing else is said to us.
And I can echo that from my group. Nothing has come from the state. You know how we wait for guidance? Excuse me, we're waiting on something to come from the commissioner. Nothing officially has come out other than a statement from the DOE that says... From the State Department here in New York that says clearly what they said to us in the last meeting and I wrote it down, "The U.S. Department of Ed Education lacks the authority to dictate school districts' policies and can only enforce laws that Congress has tasked it with administering." So, and if you've watched the news, that's been articulated that that has to abolish that, has to come from Congress. So the State Department has taken that stand. Also, some experts at the State Department said they believe, so this is not definite yet, that the impact on the New York schools will be minimal. And with federal dollars representing such a small amount of the overall funding for the state's public schools. So they're projecting, when we get some information, the impact will be minimal if there is any, but no one is definitely saying what that will be. We have heard that money for Title I funding and money for students with disabilities will be preserved. But the whole shift is to give the control of education back to the states, as we've heard that on the news, and shifting responsibilities to other departments and agencies, back to the local school systems. And so what that looks like, we haven't gotten any more on what that means. So we're waiting to hear more about that.
Okay. Any...
We have a hand here.
Oh, trustee man?
And if I look at the memo itself, it says, "Closing the Department of Education" under section two. "The Secretary of Education shall, to the maximum extent appropriate and permitted by law, take all necessary steps to facilitate the closure of Department of Education." So there's this memo and it says, "We'll do it to the extent that it's legal." And of course, it's not legal, so...
So, I'm sorry, trustee... Trustee Warner, so what were you... What were you saying?
So, I know that behind the scenes, at least according to the New York Times, what they're really doing is rehiring their IT department because they cut off... They laid off too many people and they're not able to get the money out. So they're kind of like scrambling. The... This has been called political theater. Okay? So who knows what will happen, but the memo doesn't look like it's even trying to do what it claims to do.
Okay. So we ultimately don't have any answers right now.
I will keep you informed. As soon as I can see or hear anything, it'll be in the update, but we're waiting for some more direction.
Okay. Any other que... Yes, trustee Valen?
No.
Ms. Raymond, I was looking in my CEC documents. I couldn't find the other... Because you gave us a really good line-by-line budget breakdown. So forgive me if you don't have the answer on hand, but I remember there was a line for transportation. And there was a community member that was at the meeting. I had to leave early, but that was saying to me, is there a way to reduce that number? And I... Do you remember what the number was? No? Okay. I... I'm sorry. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I don't know if anyone else remembers it.
Was it eleven million?
Was it... I was going to say eleven, but I don't know if that sounds...
Do you mean overall transportation number?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you meant a specific line. Well, our transportation is based on the number of students that we have to have a seat for on every bus. I know Frank Gunn looks at that constantly and tries to consolidate runs. And then it also would be based on how many students we have to transport out of district. If you remember, it was going to be part of my update that April first is the deadline for private school transportation. We are down right now, as of today. We are sixty-five students, I believe, down from last year of people who have asked for transportation. So that could help us next year. But other than that, I don't know where we would be able to save.
If a new student moves into the district, October first, and asks for transportation, are they allowed to have it?
If we have... If we're tran... If we're trans... Already transporting to that school, yes, they can get the transportation.
But not a new route?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? Someone did ask me to clarify the requirement or the mandate for us to bus to Catholic schools, Catholic, private, parochial schools. And I said, "I've always been told that we have to provide the same for..." That's what you've always been told as well, but they asked me to clarify.
No, we don't have to provide transportation to all Catholic school... Or not Catholic, all private schools. It's all within a certain mileage.
Radius, yeah.
That we have... Yes, then we do have to, as long as they ask for it as of April first. Yes.
Okay. Anyone? Anyone? So there's no ways to reduce that that we're thinking of?
The only way, as we have said in the past, that you could possibly reduce it is if you increase the mileage of students that would, you know, have to walk, say, to school. But then you have to remember, if you do that, now you're messing with your non-allowable pupil decimal, which is a very long calculation that Frank does for us like every five years. It's required by the State Education Department and they... That's how your state aid is determined on those allowable decimals.
So right now, we have a half a mile radius? I don't know if I'm picking the right mathematical term, but we have a half a mile from the school building. Students have to walk.
That's in board policy.
Depends on the age, right?
Right, depends on the age.
So if that were to increase, you're saying that's going to have an effect on our state aid?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. What else? Did anyone else ask any other questions about budget? No? We can move on then.
So just as a reminder, the budget vote is May twentieth, seven to nine. Woodlands Middle High School Gymnasium. And if anybody has any questions, you can email me at budget@greenbergcsd.org.
Thank you. Next, we have policy presentation. I'll turn the meeting over to my vice president, trustee Valen.
Okay, the following policies were reviewed by the board at the last work session and will be presented to the public tonight. Will be left open until the next regular meeting on April twenty-second, at which time they'll be put up for approval by the board. The policies are fifty-two fifty, sale and disposal of district property; fifty-six eighty-one, school safety plans; seventy-five forty, suicide; eighty-one ten, curriculum development; eighty-three thirty, objection to instructional materials; eighty-four fifty, homebound instruction. If anyone has any comments or questions on the policies, please email board@greenbergcsd.org. If you'd like written version, please email districtclerk@greenbergcsd.org. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Valen. And next, any questions? Comments? No? The next item up on our agenda is student ex officio report. I tried to get you here earlier. We have Leo Lorente Valen.
Yes. So, as most of you probably know, our men's basketball team this Sunday made it to the state finals of Class B, which is very impressive for them, so I congratulate them. And another thing that happened this weekend was the Drama Club's musical. They did Footloose and it was great. It was supported by the Arts Department here at Woodlands, headed by Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Cronin and Ms. Johnson. And the junior class had a pretty heavy involvement with the leads being Donovan Russell, Jake Morton, Elizabeth Kreitzberg and Laia Pullet. So you have at least another year guaranteed of a good musical, so I look forward to that. And the senior class has already decided the location and I think date of prom. I think date is concrete, but I'm not sure. It's going to be May twenty-second, I believe, at the Surf Club again. And I think the themes... We're still deciding the theme between Regal and Old Hollywood, so I'm not sure which one it's going to be. And in the senior trip, there's three packages. The first package, I think, is just yearbook, prom ticket, and that's it. Second package is yearbook, prom ticket, and then a day trip to Six Flags. And the third package is all of that plus the trip to Orlando, Florida to go to Universal with the senior class. Night trip. Okay.
That's it? I had a question. So I was contacted by a mom today and asked about the senior trip. And I was under... I told her to call the school, talk to the advisor, but I was under the impression it wasn't a senior trip. So I got the wrong information, so that's good. I didn't give her that information. So there is a senior trip to Florida. That's what we approved?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's... I think the Student Council had like several meetings and they also handed out some flyers about the packages, so...
Okay, that's good. Thank you for clarifying. And do you have the information about the wrestling and bowling teams? Because I was asked about it and I don't have the specifics. If you don't, that's fine, too.
Another wrestling team, Gisella Pullet was like the first female wrestler to place in sectionals. So that was great. And then the men's wrestling team also did very well, so we shouldn't overlook them. And then the bowling team, Cindy Guzman went to States. So our bowling team is also very good. It's not just basketball.
Okay. All right, any more questions? Yes, trustee man?
Yeah, so Footloose was really good. I'm glad I got to attend. Do you know how much you guys made off the proceeds from the play by any chance? Did they count it up yet?
I think that's... You'd have to ask Ms. Johnson. That's the Drama Club, so I'm not too sure on that.
Okay. And all the proceeds go to the Drama Club, right? Just curious.
I believe.
Did you?
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, maybe we could find out how much. Yeah, that's good.
I'm just curious.
And also, Ms. Raymond, since... And I was also going to mention in my report about the boys' basketball. I just, as routine, we talked about it last year, just get the breakdown of costs that we spent for the championship. I think we had got something last year. Do you guys remember what we got? You... I'm sure you have it somewhere. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Lorente Valen? No? Okay, thank you. Please stay or if you have to go and do work, that's fine, too. Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports for this evening? Trustee... Trustee Warner?
The Community Engagement Committee and the Finance Committee held a combined meeting on March nineteenth at seven PM in the RJ Bailey Cafeteria. One, we reviewed the line-by-line appropriations report for the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget. This portion of the meeting was chaired by Finance Committee Chair Chris Valen and the budget codes and changes from last year were explained by Lisa Raymond. You can look at it online if you want to. The discussion lasted over an hour and there were a lot of it... A lot of covered. If you want to mention a few things, Chris, you can. Okay? For more information on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, visit our website at greenbergcsd.org. Go to About District Budget. Submit questions about the budget, as Lisa said, to budget@greenbergcsd.org. Everything from state reform, state aid reform to federal lunch aid can be positively affected by public advocacy. So everything is in flux, but if a politician can take a stack of emails and say, "Look what my constituents want," it will be effective. So to write letters to your government representatives at federal and state... At the federal and state level impacting aid to our schools, you can look at the school board websites. Westchester Putnam School Board website, wpsba.org, and click on Advocacy. Or the New York State School Board Association, that's NISBA, nysba.org. And again, click on Advocacy. The combined committee recommended posting a link on our website to advocacy organizations... The Combined Committee recommended posting a link on our website to the, to advocacy organizations, provided it's legal. So we need to check and, and see if we can put that up there or not quickly, if we, if we had links from the, from the district website to the places. Two, we discussed the Nettie Jackson Extra Mile Award. The judges panel now includes Dr. Iverson, Board Member Tracy Mares, and past winner Damaris Lugo. We're looking for two more judges. The Nettie Jackson Extra Mile Award honors community and staff for going the extra mile to help students. A panel of judges evaluates nominations from the community. If you'd like to nominate someone for this award, the nomination forms and rules are on the district website, greenbergcsd.org. Go to the menu item About, Board of Education, and click Nettie Jackson Award. Deadline for submissions is 5/21/25. The award will be presented at the 6/17 Board Meeting. So look for those coming your way, District Clerk. Okay. We are planning a superintendent's dessert for June 10th to celebrate our accomplishments for the year. Stay tuned for details. We discussed the potential closing of the U.S. Department of Education and its satellite offices. We just talked about here, that here. We also discussed diversity, equity, and inclusion. The Department of Education threatened to withhold federal funds to educational institutions that promote it, and the Attorney Generals of, of states, including New York, defending it. The conclusion we came to was, don't panic yet. We viewed a slideshow that included construction projects, including the Woodlands Roof, the Lee F. Jackson Natural Gas Trench, and the RJ Bailey Jim Wall mats, the March 12th International Baccalaureate Art Show at Woodlands, and the March 13th K-12 Steam Night, featuring robotics, computer science, electronics, lizards, birds, snakes, finding fossils, and building nests. The Mar- and of course, the March 16th varsity boys' basketball final versus Dryden that made us the regional champs and put us in the Final Four for the state championship. And we heard about that from Lorente Valen. We adopted the minutes of the previous meeting. We looked at the, a calendar of upcoming events that included the Woodlands Spring Musical, production of Footloose, the state basketball championship, upcoming committees in tennis, softball, and baseball, and flag football games. The community input, so this is what the community at the end of the agenda comes back to us with. Parents and students don't know the scope of ongoing construction projects and when they will, and when they'll be complete. We should devise a "Your Tax Dollars at Work" poster to be placed near the entrance of each school. We should publish information in our new district newsletter, in our district newsletter and school newsletters. And we should post information on the district website and social media. It is the recommendation of the Combined Committee that we increase our efforts to publicize district renovation and upgrade, renovation and upgrade projects. Anybody disagree with that?
I don't disagree, but, you know, the meeting was last week. I don't, I, I wonder why things take, like, such a long time sometimes? Because we had a bunch of people here three days in a row for the play. So that could, that was eyes missing the opportunity, they may not drive on campus again, missing the opportunity to have that type of sign or some sort of notice. But for some reason, we take, like, a long time to communicate with each other so that these things can be done, like, we miss that opportunity now. I don't know, you know?
There are more opportunities.
Yeah, but the spring concert, right?
Yeah. A retired ecologist and former Woodlands parent volunteered to assist staff or environmental club or similar organization in a STEM project to monitor the Warburg Campus natural environment. So if, I guess I'll just pass that on to the administration, and we'll drill down to the, the Science Department teachers. The next meeting of the Community Engagement Committee is Wednesday, April 9th at 7:00 PM in the Woodlands Innovation Lab. Yeah?
This is just kind of piggybacking on the idea of having eyes on more of our progress. Is there talk in the committee about having any kind of visual or pictures or list of accomplishments at the actual budget vote?
So, you can use social media for pictures, obviously. I mean, that's the cheapest way to do it. I, I, I'm not, I'm not thinking we're going to put posters up that show pictures of the construction projects and, you know, the, the construction project schedules will change. So we've got to have something that's cheap to create, you know, not, not a wooden sign that we have to paint, right? You have to put something up, and then next month, put something else up, and so on down the line. But, yeah.
I think, and the way I'm thinking about it is if we're saying, like, "Your tax dollars at work", there are definitely people in the community who come and don't know where their tax dollars are going. And I think having something, even if it's not pictures, but just a list of accomplishments from the district, we're second in the state, you know, in basketball, all these different things that we're doing that are phenomenal, to make sure that the people who might be a little wary of the financial part of supporting the school, that their, their dollars are going to really amazing things and really amazing students.
I agree, because not everyone uses social media, Trustee Warner, too. So it's good to kind of see it maybe in black and white somewhere.
Well, we have a budget newsletter opportunity coming up.
I'm just thinking, right before you vote, to see all of the things that are super good, because it, it counteracts, and if you're not seeking out good news, and you've already come in with different negative assumptions, it's something right before you vote that counters that belief.
And I got yelled at by someone who didn't receive the budget newsletter last year when I was campaigning, so I just want to throw that out there, too.
Yep. I have personally gone to mailboxes and put extra copies in.
We can look into something like that. I'm thinking, Ms. Raymond, remember the signs we had made and put with the little sticks, the little sticks on it that we put in the grass?
100 feet from the poll in place, right?
Trying to get some more hiring for substitutes and all, we could probably do something like that.
Not here, but in the past, we've put a video together and have had a laptop that just is on a continual
Yeah.
run that just keeps playing over and over as you walk in. Obviously, it's got to be so many feet from the polling, blah, blah, blah. But people can see it before they go in. And/or it could be at every school that people that visit could see that also.
I think we need to give people something to vote for.
Right.
And give them as much encouragement as they may.
Yeah, can you just make sure your green light is on? Because we can hear each other, but I guess, I don't, I'm not sure, Mr. Parker, if people on the screen can hear us, if the mic is not on? I can't hear you.
That's how the mic works.
Yeah, no, I know that. I'm saying, I don't know if any of, the conversation when it was, the mic was not on was picked up? Oh, good, okay. So there must be sensitive mics. That's good. Oh, there's mics in the ceiling? Oh, well, that's not good. Yeah. Uh, okay.
We'll look into something. We meet on Monday, Communications Committee. Okay?
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Is that it for the report? Any other questions, comments? No? Anyone? Yes?
Are you doing liaison reports, too, or just committee?
We're going to do liaison next. Are we all done with committee? Yes, Trustee Valen?
As Trustee Warner alluded to, we had a Combined Committee meeting last week. And the next Finance Committee meeting is next week, April 1st. What day of the week is that? It is a Tuesday, Tuesday, April 1st, a budget workshop. We'll be answering some questions that were brought up at the last meeting and going, once again, line by line through the appropriations report. We hope to have the meeting at Lee F. Jackson. We will also livestream the meeting. Once those details are finalized, the link and information will be put onto the district calendar. Or you can email me at cvallen@greenbergcsd.org. Also, we are postponing our Education Committee meeting, which was scheduled for next week, April 2nd. That topic will now be covered at our previously scheduled meeting on April 29th, which is also a Tuesday. So April 29th is the new Education Committee meeting date. We will be covering the International Baccalaureate Program. All are welcome, 7:00 PM at the Woodlands Middle High School Innovation Lab.
I have a question about the Finance Committee, or a comment, I should say. Right, I love that you used the word budget workshop, because we get a lot of people later that say, "Why isn't this in the budget? Why isn't that in the budget?" Now is the time to come out to one of the budget workshops that Trustee Valen just mentioned and speak up, ask questions. There were people at the last meeting that did, you know, ask questions about the line-by-line budget. Ms. Raymond is there. She answered those questions. I did have one community member said, "Why are they asking her questions?" Because, you know, she worked really hard on an $84 million budget, and, you know, she's not going to be able to change and move things around. But actually, now is the time, where if there is need to be a change, and you never know, there could be a question that we just didn't think of that could, you know, force some sort of reevaluation somewhere. So it's important that you come out, you speak up, you ask questions, because once we accept the budget, that's what we're presenting to the public for, for a vote. Yes, Trustee Valen?
May I answer some things you didn't actually ask? You just mentioned we accept the budget. The next week is really the last opportunity for the public to come out and express those questions and, and concerns, because the Board will adopt the budget on April 22nd, as per different requirements. The budget hearing is May 6th, and as Ms. Raymond alluded to earlier, the budget vote is May 20th. But there are some deadlines we need to meet prior to that, so that's important to know. I'm going to add one more deadline, just FYI to everyone out there who is not yet registered to vote, but does qualify. The deadline to register to vote, to be able to participate in the May 20th budget vote and school board election, is May 15th. If you have any questions, email districtclerk@greenbergcsd.org or contact your Westchester County Board of Elections. Thank you.
Hold on, Trustee Valen. So the next budget workshop, again, is Tuesday, April 1st. What time? I missed that.
7:00 PM, most likely at Lee F. Jackson, but it's not yet confirmed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other committee reports? Hearing num- yes, oh, Trustee Jacobson.
Sorry, just two dates. The next Wellness Committee, on behalf of Julie, or Trustee Long, is April 3rd at 12:30 here at Woodlands. And Tech Committee is April 9th at noon, also at Woodlands.
Great, thank you. We're going to move on to liaison report. Does anyone have any liaison report? We'll start with ECP, Lee F. Jackson.
Yeah, of course. You skipped it for two months, well, last month, so.
Yes.
ECP's busy at work. All right, so February 10th, ECP celebrated the 100th Day of School, so there was a big celebration with that. So we saw pictures with kids with t-shirts and all the things. In honor of STEAM, they had a science fair. They also did a project playing with different states of water, so that was fun. There was a pre-K teach day. Mr. Washington opened up the classrooms to parents to come in, engage with their children's learning, to see what that looked like. And this month, there was a premiere of ECP News Content Show, where you have clips of students giving little interviews to one another, maybe about two minutes. And upcoming things that's going on is Night Under the Stars. There's going to be a spring concert with our little ones, a Space Pact, and then Purim. So that's ECP in a nutshell.
Thank you, Trustee Manz. Lee F. Jackson?
Let's see, the, on March 26th and March 27th, we have 11:30 dismissal for LFJ students for parent-teacher conferences. We had, well, a number of shout-outs for events that have already passed, the musical and the, and the championship, the veterans, you know, the basketball championship, and we have a- Yes, so they announced to the parents that these district-wide events would be- Okay. And then there's the save the date for the PTA Spring Family Fun Event, Movie Night, April 4th, 2025, 6:00 PM, LFJ Cafeteria.
Awesome, thank you. Anything for Hyview? Anything for Bailey?
I'm sorry, that's me.
Make sure you got the green button.
Oh, no, it's on permanently. So, the Hyview PTA would like to announce on a Wednesday, April 9th, between 7:00, 8:30 PM, there will be a virtual presentation on Empowering Families, Navigating Co-Occurring Disorders for a Resilient Future. It is a virtual presentation, and if you have any questions about registration, please email hyviewpta200@gmail.com. Hyview had a social-emotional learning assembly about the power of "yet", "Never Give Up", "Encourage Others", and "Do Your Best". There's also a piloting, they're piloting a program for recess enrichment, and it will begin after the spring break, where there are opportunities to choose three classes for students during recess. Art, PE, Mandarin, music, and STEAM are the choices. There are parent-teacher conferences on Wednesday and Thursday this week. And there is no school on Monday, the 31st. Spirit Day this Friday is basketball theme in honor of March Madness.
Thank you, Trustee Sopleyo. RJ Bailey?
Not much, other than parent-teacher conferences and their PTA met last night, and looking to fill their board for next year as well. And I missed the beginning of that meeting, so I don't know, I know there were other trustees on that call, if there was anything I'm missing.
Anything? I don't remember what happened in the beginning either.
That's Bailey-specific.
Sorry.
I'm drawing a blank. It was a lot of content, I'll tell you that. That's why I'm drawing a blank. But good stuff, all good stuff.
Okay, join the PTA in any of the buildings. And Woodlands Middle High School.
I'm just going to highlight one item, and that's our WISE program is, which is Woodlands Individualized Senior Experience, is doing the journal reading this week. And volunteers are welcome to come to the school to read the progress that the WISE students have made so far in their journals and to just take notes on, on a, on a rubric. The daytime reading is from 11:30 AM to 3:00 PM. And the evening reading is from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And when you arrive at the building, you can ask for Ms. Elizabeth Huber. And I'm trying to find the email address that you can email. You can email wise@greenbergcsd.org if you're interested or have any questions. Again, that's this Thursday, the 27th, 11:30 to 3:00, and 5:00 to 8:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Valen. I did hear from a community member with concerns about the WISE room needing some sort of updates and renovations. Did you hear about that, Ms. Raymond, or no?
I heard about that, too.
I've heard about that many times.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
Can you tell us about what's happening with that?
I can't tell you what's happening with it, no.
Why not?
Because I don't, I don't know what's happening.
So is there issue with the-
I know they lost their podium, that, that everybody came after the 50th anniversary and thought that WISE was over and took all their stuff, and they had to run around the building and, and bring it back. I know that the podium got donated to here, because we needed it here, but then it, the people here thought it looked too old, so they threw it away, so now we need a podium. I know we need a coat of paint. I need, you know, there are a bunch of things.
You're the chair of the Facilities Committee. Trustee Warner, write it into your Facilities Committee, so you can talk about what needs to, do you mind putting it on your next agenda? So we could talk about what's needed or not needed?
It's a regular request that needs to be made to the administration.
Oh, so it wasn't made to the administration? It's just people talking about it?
Or it's been made and hasn't, and there hasn't been a response. I don't know.
Dr. Iverson, can you look into what, I mean, I've, I keep, I keep getting asked by the community members, and it sounds like Trustee Man has heard it, you said you've heard it.
Yeah.
I don't know where it's stopping, that it's not getting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Follow-up with Mr. Pagli, Ms. Raymond.
Have you heard it, too? No?
No, I had not heard. I don't, did we get officially? No, so we will follow up, but
You haven't heard it.
We have not heard it.
Thank you for following up on that. And then the other thing I was going to mention about Woodlands Middle High School is that we do have a seal of bilinguism. So any public member that watches this YouTube, we usually get a couple of hundred views, that speaks another language, that's fluent in another language, if you want to help the children volunteer, it's a great way to volunteer a little bit of your time. Offer to volunteer, what? Oh, offer to volunteer your time for your language. We have, usually have lots of different options for language. You can email to Catherine Ador, caddor, C-A-D-D-O-R, at greenbergcsd.org. Or you can go with, through Dr. Njoku. I don't know what languages they're doing this year. We've done various, you have them? Trustee Valen has them. She's got it for me. Okay, thank you. Spanish, Haitian Creole, Japanese- thank you. Spanish, Haitian Creole, Japanese, Korean, Mandarin, Portuguese. Even if you don't speak a language, but you know your neighbor speaks Portuguese, maybe say, hey, you want to help the kids, volunteer your time. And, and basically, I think what they would do, Dr. Njoku, do you want to talk about what they would be able to do? Do you know what they would do for the CILA by Literacy?
I can.
Oh, you did it before?
I volunteer every year.
Wonderful. Can you share with folks what they would have to do?
So volunteers come and get assigned different students that are presenting projects for the CILA by Literacy. You sit down with a rubric, and you have a conversation with these students, and the students really speak to their project, and then you rate their proficiency in the language that you're rating.
Wonderful, thank you, trustee Sembalayo. Because I don't speak another language, I would not be able to help. But thank you, that's helpful. That's all I wanted to share. Is there anything else about Woodlands Middle High School? No? Okay, any other liaisons? Yes, trustee Jacobson?
For PTA Council, their next, next meeting is April seventh on Zoom, and you can email gcsdptacouncilfoursevenfive@gmail.com if you want to be able to attend. And they are also going to be sending out teacher grant applications next week to all staff via Google Forms, so student, teachers can start applying for different projects that they might want to do. And the council has been busy, and they attended the Weber Conference with a focus on school nutrition, and had a chance to engage with elected officials, and also the Know Your Rights event, where the Elmsford PTSA invited the Greenberg PTAs to join an assembly led by the neighbors, led by Neighbors Link, as a way to collaborate between districts about knowing the rights for immigrant populations in our communities.
Thank you, trustee Jacobson. And the board event has a special meeting that night too, on April seventh. Hopefully, everyone will be here. Okay. Oh, all right. I'm going to keep working on you. Trustee Warner, trustee Mann.
Yes, trustee Jacobson, if we have questions about, let's see, some of the takeaways you guys got from the conferences you guys attended, should we email you?
I would email the council directly.
Okay.
Do you need the email again?
Please.
I'm sorry, are you, are you asking as a board member or as a parent?
I'm going to go in my parent's shoes.
Okay.
On that one.
Because I was going to say, maybe you could get it for the board, the takeaways from the, you saying Know Your Rights.
Really, the ones that focused on, what was it, nutrition in schools or something like that?
The Weber Conference?
Yeah.
I could ask.
Would that be transferred over to the Wellness Committee for some suggestions? As we all know, feedback I've gotten from the food is, sometimes it's not the greatest. So just trying to hear, you know, what was shared during those sessions or whatever.
I can ask. I do know two members of the PTA Council Board are also community members of the Wellness Committee, so I'm assuming some of that will translate anyway. But if you're looking for something more formal, I can definitely put that out there.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other liaison reports? Hearing none. Let's move on. We have Board President's Report. So I wanted to first congratulate Dr. Iverson. She was selected, and I don't know if everyone knows, to be honored at New York State's Legislative Event for Women's History Month, and I believe it was March eighteenth and nineteenth in Albany. And I'll just read very quickly what, what this is, what the honor is, right? It's part of the news. This is a, this is a news article.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Greenberg Central School District Superintendent Dr. Linda J. Iverson has received the distinct honor of being selected by New York State Assembly Member Mary Jane Shimsky to be recognized at an upcoming event sponsored by the New York State Legislative Women's Caucus. The event celebrates Women's History Month with the theme, Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations. It celebrates the powerful influence of women who dedicate themselves to education, advocacy, and leadership. The event was in Albany, and Assembly Member Shimsky had a special connection to the district, as her swearing-in ceremony was held here last month in Woodlands Middle High School, where Woodlands students led the oath in the ceremony. So Dr. I, can you share some words of your, your award and how that was, please?
First, let me thank everyone. Thank you, trustee Mears, for that. I had not seen that. So thank you for that. I appreciate your comments and your reading. That, it was a great event. I thoroughly enjoyed it. It was being around other educators who are leaders in the field. It was a full day, days we were able to be on the floor and witness some of the sessions, and during the sessions, we were acknowledged as a group there first, and then had a great tour of the Capitol in Albany. It's my first time being in Albany. Beautiful building, great, great structure of the building, great intricate details there. And was able to meet many other senators on the floor and who were just very gracious, had a very nice lunch, and then went back on the session floor, where we were introduced individually and received nice recognition. So a very, very full day, but I, I did enjoy it, and a lot of good conversation. I was, Senator Andrew Stewart-Cousins was there as our keynote speaker, and she spoke about, you know, she is a female leader, and she's done tremendous things in the field of education and support schools. And she spoke about how this work is ongoing and how we are to cultivate and continue to groom more leaders and more women who are leaders, who are in the field, to be those role models for our up-and-coming students. So it was very touching. There were many superintendents there from other districts. I've met many of them from Long Island were there, and had many representatives there for others who were being recognized. So a great honor, and I really enjoyed everything about it. So thank you for that, and thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
So we continue to do great things. Thank you, Dr. Iverson. And from our superintendent to our students, we have our boys' basketball, as everyone keeps talking about. What has happened is this, and I'm not the connoisseur, so someone correct me if I'm wrong. Every area in New York State sports is broken up into regions, and they're called sections. We're in Section One for our sports region. Our boys' basketball beat every one in our class size, meaning schools similar to our demographic si, excuse me, population size. We've beaten every school in our population size in our region. We then moved on to a semifinalist in Yorktown, right, and we beat another region. If anyone knows that region number, let me know. But it was Burke Catholic, huh?
Nine.
Nine, Region Nine. So we went ahead, we beat that region. Then we moved on to Binghamton, and we're in the Final Four, which is what happened last year. Last year, we, we stopped at the Final Four. We lost. This year, we moved on, am I right, to Binghamton? We moved on to Binghamton, and then we beat that section. Does anybody know what, that was? No? Okay. And then we moved on again until this prior weekend, excuse me, this was the Final Four, this weekend, and we won on Saturday, and we beat that region. That was another district out in Long Island. That was...
Carl Place.
Carl Place. So wherever region they're in, we beat them. And we got to the Final Two region, Section One, and anyone know what Section Marcellus was? Final Two section, so we're talking about all of New York State. We're talking about districts up in Buffalo and in Rochester. These are all schools that have around, say, around sixteen-hundred kids, right, who have basketball teams. We got to the Final Two, and we just fell short by five points, by five points. So, you know, our kids are amazing. Many of our kids are scholars as well as athletes, right? Our kids lose many, many, many of their friends to private and parochial schools, and they stay, and they try really hard, and they commit to the district. So I love them. But we also heard tonight about some other sports. We heard about individual female wrestler that got up to the sectional finals, meaning in the region, she got up to the finals. We also heard about the bowling team who, what did he say? They went to the state finals. So very similar level of trajectory in this, and that's awesome, and that's amazing. We are a Title One school, which means a large percentage of our students do not have certain level of, God bless you, financial income. So these kids don't necessarily afford AAU, private lessons, and all of these things that families with money can afford, and they still work really hard, and they still make it to these finals. So that's really amazing, and they should be applauded. So I just wanted to bring that up, and then I will move along. Next on our agenda, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Linda J. Iverson.
Thank you, trustee Mears. I won't reiterate everything you said, but I too want to congratulate our boys' varsity basketball team and the coaching staff, Mr. Rappaport and his assistant, as well as our middle, high school cast crew and teachers for the Spring Musical Footloose. I will echo your sentiments, trustee Mears, and say that our boys have just really earned, I think, I know, the respect of their competitors in this field of basketball. They are, they are forced to be reckoned with. They are good, and they're tough, and so proud of them when they're on the floor. So I too want to recognize them and honor them for their accomplishment, just moving us through the ranks and the divisions, as you just mentioned. They're very impressive, very good, and they just are, we just admire them. The Spring Musical, it was a great success, you know. I've heard a lot of unsolicited commentary about just how great it was, you know. Getting on the stage, it takes a lot of courage to get up here and act. It requires that you just do a lot to put on a live production, and I tell you, the boldness, the braveness of our students is just amazing, and I want to commend them for their, and everyone for the wonderful job, the talent, and the choreography was, you know, I understand was impressive, and everyone just had fun. So congratulations to our great students and our faculty and staff. I want to thank the Greenberg community for supporting our athletes and our programs. They come out, and trust me, the students, I know, I know, feel your support when we are in, and when you're in the background, when you're in the chairs cheering for them. It's nothing like looking out into the audience and seeing your mom or your dad and others just rooting for you. So, and the community comes out. They've never let our students down. So I want to make sure I congratulate and thank the Greenberg community for that. You know, I shared in my update a couple of weeks ago that we, the district, had expanded the STEAM program, where we called it the Hour of Code. That program was initiated by Ms. Kelly Verdena, who's our interim DOT Director of Technology, and it's just expanded. And so this year, we extended it, I'm sorry, extended it so that it lasted several additional weeks, so we could reach every student in the district, even our ECP students participated in this project. So I wanted to share, you know, that one of our leaders in this effort, who works in our district, Ms. Victoria Bolton, because of her excellent leadership in working with all the students, getting to all the schools around this Code, Hour of Code initiative, has been selected to present about the successful program, the Greenberg program, at an educators' conference called Tech Expo in May. Isn't that amazing? We want to give her a... So they want to know what's happening here. So she's going there to present our STEAM, our Code program. People have heard about it, they want to know about it. So what a wonderful way for the district to be recognized again for great work. So congratulations, Victoria. We're very proud of you. Great job. And finally, I'd like to share that the Woodlands High School, under the direction of the MBK Coordinator we all love, Mr. Anthony Gaines, he just took fifteen girls to participate in a kickoff event for My Sisters Keeper last week. My Sisters Keeper. Now, this is a new initiative through the New York State Education Department, and the event was held at the Bronx Community College. Now, this My Sisters Keeper, as you know, is an initiative that builds on My Brothers Keeper program mission, and the whole point is to change the narrative for boys and young men of color by focusing on the specific challenges girls and young women of color experience in STEAM education. That is just amazing. So the initiative will work to eliminate all of the gender disparities in STEAM. As we know, originally, we had more men and boys going into this field, and we have now more females being, who are becoming interested in it. So My Sisters Keeper is focusing on exposing our girls to that. So I want to just mention to you that our MBK program is growing. These young women will serve, as I know, during Women's History Month as catalysts. They're going to become leaders to bring forth this diverse MSK program to the great district of Greenberg. So wanted to share some great news there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Iverson. And next, we have the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Dr. Njoku.
Good evening. So I just wanted to mention that during the Education Committee, I, I just found it very, I found it very impressive, the conversation that was had during that time. It was during that time, during the Education Committee, we spoke about the middle-of-year data with iReady, and there were some questions that everyone engaged in. So those in attendance, we explored data from all students. We, the data was disaggregated with special education students, English language learners. The conversation was very extremely thoughtful and generated ideas and things that we can take back. So some of the questions, so to encourage people to come out to the Education Committee because of these rich conversations, what did our reading and math iReady data assessments show us? How are we making adequate growth? What is the relationship between iReady and the New York State Testing Program? And what, what other data, data is considered when making instructional decisions? So I just encourage, along with trustee Valen, the board, the superintendent, our families to come out to these evenings, where we do have conversations on topics that, around instruction of our young people. Additionally, I do want to say that, special thank you to Ms. Cronin around the IB Visual Arts Exhibition. I, I do have to say that that was, it, it, it struck me, the visual impact of the work that our young people did, just, I can't, I can't say the words, because when you walked in there, you can feel, not just see, the thoughtfulness and how much it meant to them, their technical achievement, their skills, and it, and even more so, stopping to have the conversation about their why. Why did they create what they created? Some of it came from stories from their families. Some of it came from their own experience and thoughts. Some of, it just, it was, it was much more, it was very much a sensory experience, and I just give kudos to those young people, some who said that they were not even interested in art. But, you know, because of their personal project through this IB exposure, they were able to branch out and, and take a risk and explore something that they wouldn't have otherwise. So kudos to them, kudos to the instruction. And, and then in terms of our STEAM night, special thanks to those who took the time to facilitate. It's not always the easiest, putting all this stuff together to have the night. It was about two-hundred-and-forty people in attendance, and some of the facilitators of this were Ms. Kelly Gillan, Kelly Verdena, Ms. Valery Woodward, and Ms. John Bill Fury. We had a lot of teacher volunteers, including Ms. Bolton, that Dr. Iverson just mentioned, and we had student volunteers in clubs. Our animal care club was there, our Science Honor Society, chemistry kids, our physics volunteers, key club, RJ Bailey Engineering Club, and they were so invested in making sure every single participant got to explore what they know in terms of STEAM. So that concludes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Njoku. Next, we have the Assistant Superintendent for Business, trustee Raymond. Trustee Raymond, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. The January twenty-twenty-five Treasurers Report, we started the general fund with twenty-nine million, five-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. We had total cash receipts of seventeen million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-two dollars, and we dispersed six million, six-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty dollars to end the month with forty million, six-hundred-and-one dollars, nine-hundred-and, or forty million, six-hundred-and-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars. As I said earlier, April first is the deadline for private school transportation applications. To date, we've received two-hundred-and-sixty-three applications, and we're approximately sixty-five down from the number that we transport this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Are there any questions, comments concerned about the Superintendent for Business Report? Hearing none. Can I get a motion for a second executive session, please?
I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment history of particular persons, personnel matters under employee records, and matters deemed confidential by state or federal law, including seeking advice from council.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. 9:35 PM. We're now going into a second executive session. I do not know when we will be out. Thank you. At some point, Mr., okay, we're live. It's 12:16 PM and we are back in public session again. Can I get a motion to approve personnel instructional items, please?
I move that we approve the instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the non-instructional personnel items?
I move that we approve the non-instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening with the exception of item H2, which is tabled.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carry. Can I get a motion for board action items?
I move that we approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Discussion on the calendar. So board, we have a calendar. I don't know if the assistant soups want to leave or if you want them here. The calendar discussion? Okay, so, sorry, guys. I didn't mean to scare you guys.
Yeah, because they were in a meeting with you and discussed it, right?
No, we were still wait, you had to talk to different people first. Or they did, on Friday, they talked to different people.
I think there's a 4C now?
Yeah, I think they should actually have been in the discussion because they had, they had further discussion. So we now are on a calendar. Here that. You have it? Okay, great.
So from what I understand, if we're having now is to, is 4C. MOA could start early, August still, right? And this is the MOA that she met with, they met with James Bell Friday. And, well, Washington, and Tiara, to all three of you presidents. So it's the two weeks vacation and four weeks in December.
Yes.
It is an early dismissal, two hours on November 26th, well, Thanksgiving. And. I forget, I forget how many PD days.
So school, school will start for staff on the 27th and 28th?
And they agree to that.
Students on the 2nd?
So they get the long weekend for the Labor Day, right?
Right. And then there will be early dismissal.
Early dismissal on the 20, two hours.
Two hour early dismissal on Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
It's not a project save, but it's a two-hour dismissal. That's what's changed. That's why it's a 4C.
Okay.
Two weeks vacation.
In December.
In some winter.
Winter break.
And all the, and all the other vacations, we didn't, our four vacations, we didn't take any days away.
And we are not observing.
And we're not, but that was the day.
Eid al-ah. Al-ah, and we have four superintendent conference days.
Gave us another day. So that was the nice medium between everyone that they agreed on. That's what the MOA is saying.
Can I ask, why do we need four snow days?
Well, the snow days, well, I guess we, we don't, we can.
Do we need four snow days?
No, they didn't tell me what they decided on that, but we don't, we can change.
Like what happens if we convert, it says includes four snow days, ooh, sorry.
Thank you for doing that.
Include four snow days.
Well, how does it hurt the calendar now? Because you want to put Eid al-ah back?
No, I think you guys made it clear that I would want to do the three-day thing because we can't have Monday off and Tuesday in and then Wednesday off. You guys said that wasn't a good idea. So we were trying to do the three days in a row, right? And they rejected that. So what happens if the four snow days go to two or three snow days? Anyone? Chris, you understand the calendar. What happened?
You could either add it, you could add it, you could switch it to non-instructional. Which captures instructional days, but the students wouldn't be in the room.
Are the students in the room for snow days? No.
Snow days, no one's, and, snow day is a snow day.
But they're not scheduled.
They're not scheduled, right.
So if you wanted to take off, you know, the 26th, you have two snow days. And you have, you meet your legal requirements for time, but you have two less days with children. Are you there? Which is what's on, something that you was concerned.
But this is for snow days, meaning we can miss four days or we cannot.
That's right.
Okay, sorry. But what if, what if we did? What if we, right. What if we did three snow days and gave another PD day? Or three snow days and gave off Eid al-ah? Does nobody want to do that? If not, I'm fine.
I thought last time we met, we had gone around and many of us were talking about two snow days, but there were additional days put on.
I thought so too, but, but I think what happened was the assistant soups had a meeting with, right. And, and it was decided.
They would not agree to that.
To go back to, well, it's not that, I don't know, because I wasn't there, but I thought, God bless you. The caveat was that we took off the beginning of the two-week break in December. Like they really wanted that for two weeks.
And they wanted the November piece, but that doesn't.
And the November piece, yes.
But not taking, and it really boiled down to moved days off to May, instead of December, to compromise with those of the board who wanted, sorry. To compromise with many that became concerned raised by some that kids need to be in the classroom.
Right.
So that was, that was the, that was the reason to moving days instead of just adding on two more days.
Okay.
So we could, we could add on two more days, we could add on one more days of PD or days off. But those who expressed concerns about.
But then kids are out of school.
Correct. We meet our mandate, we meet our minimum instructional time for the state, but kids would physically not be in the building. So.
Well, I, is it fair for someone who celebrates Eid al-ah to have to take off their personal time or a child or family that celebrates to have to have an absence?
So we're back to the problem.
Is it an excused absence if it's a religion?
A day in, a day off, or do you have all three days off? And then you're back to the problem of, we have so many days off, you know? We don't have enough vacation money to, to provide childcare for our friends. Well, we really need to be in there. It's, it's the, sorry, I mean, it's really late, but that's what, the debate has been on.
All right, let's go around. What do you guys want to do? I would prefer to give a day off for the religious holiday if we're doing other religions. We do Christian religion, we do Jewish religions. To me, we should also observe Islam religions. I don't know if that's fair not to do that. It's one day. That's what I would say. We're still in discussion, by the way. There's a motion on the board. So we'll go around. Trustee Mance, what do you want to do with, do you want to leave it? Do you want to add Eid al-ah?
It's very, it is late.
We don't have to accept it tonight. We could leave it. And if we were to leave it, then the calendar would not be out yet.
When does the calendar typically go out? Are we behind?
No.
We're, we're, it has to be approved sometime in April, but I think it's a date that we have to have it approved by. I don't know it. So you have at least one more meeting.
And we have to do that because we've got to get it to a printer to get the calendars out, mailed out.
And the state has a date, the calendars have to be approved by a day.
Okay, all right. When you don't want to vote, what do you say?
So there's two things going on. There is a motion on the board to accept all of the board action items. If we were to make a change to the calendar or just leave it, the question is, do you want to make a change or leave it as is? If we leave it as is, we can continue on with the motion. If we want to make a change, the motion maker would have to rescind their motion and make it without the calendar in it.
Gotcha.
So do you want me to skip you and come back?
It's just, to your point, I think we should recognize all holidays, but it's just real wacky how it falls because I can see children not come to school on that Tuesday. And someone's really going to extend his vacation out because you've got Memorial Day right there, so. You know. Come back.
Okay, trustee Werner?
I would, I would move that we, that we amend the resolution to table idle, item I4.
Okay. Trustee Valen?
So are we all, are we all?
Are you going to leave it or table it? Leave it as is and just do the whole, the motion, or table this item and think more about observing Eid al-ah. Trustees?
I will always vouch for more PD days, but I think we have gone through 14, 12, something different calendars. And this one was approved by the union, and I think it's never going to be 100% perfect. And just keep it at this stage of the game.
Keep it as is.
I would table it. There's no four votes anywhere, so I don't know what that means now. One, two, three, no, we go back to trustee Mance, you didn't. Do you want to leave it or table the calendar?
Let me, I got to think about this. So table me. That's, that's me.
So can you rescind the motion and?
I rescind the motion.
Can you remake a motion for board action?
Do you want me to make a motion that excludes item I4? I move that we approve.
Board action.
Board action items presented to the board for the approval this evening with the exception of item I4, which is tabled.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes?
The calendar item is item I5.
Okay.
Do you rescind your motion?
I5.
I have no idea what.
I5?
Can you rescind your motion and make it again?
I rescind my motion and make it again.
Patricia in her first meeting. Sorry, we don't usually get this crazy.
There's 4C right there in item I4. Okay. Okay.
I5 board action is.
I move that we approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening with the exception of I5, which is tabled.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carry. Dr. Iverson, did you want to say something about the calendar? No.
Okay.
I do.
Yes?
Because item four is a MOA for the GTF. And if you look at the admin content, it's saying that the GTF's approval of this MOA was based on calendar draft 4C. Was this just 4C?
Oh my god. So are you changing your position and you want to add the calendar? It's very late, I'm sorry.
No, she's, she's pointing out that I may have been right. And we're waiting for Chris to determine what her opinion is.
You are so funny, David.
Got it.
But they don't, they don't go together. They don't go hand in hand. I didn't, unfortunately, I did not look at that.
Well, does the MO, did we, okay.
And I don't even know what it was. Let's see, who's it giving? Wait, what? Why can't I get this open? Why can't I open this? Okay, I got it, I got it.
So if, if you read the MOA, it specifically talks about coming to work on August 27th and 28th.
So the admin content is in the wrong spot.
That's trustee Valen.
The GTF, right. So they're dependent on each other, right?
Yeah.
So if we don't adopt the calendar, then the MOA has a different start date. And so you're saying that we need to table items I4 and I5.
Well, here's the thing, trustee, I mean trustee mayors, you were saying that the MOA is based upon the start date for school.
Yeah, but I guess the intention was understood that it would be that calendar. And we would need to go back and have a conversation and say that there is discussion to have an additional day, the 27th, 20th, May, something as an off day. And if they object to that, then they object to that, and you got to let us know. If they're fine with that, then they're fine with that. Then you got to let us know.
All right. So shall I rescind my motion and then table both items? All right. I rescind my motion. I move that we approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening with the exceptions of I4 and I5, which are tabled.
Second.
You already vote, so.
So do you want to? So we have to vote to, to rescind the motion and accept that?
Vote to rescind item I4, or to vote to, you just voted to accept item I4 in that group. We'd have to vote to not accept item I4 right now.
I vote that we, I move that we do not accept item I4. Like that?
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. But I, but I think, I mean, we need to double-check it, but we just undo item I4 and item I5?
Yes.
Sorry. Item I4 and I5 are not being accepted right now. They're being tabled. There's a really nasty way to go through. Okay. Item F4, Finance, can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the Finance items presented to the board for approval this evening.
If it's been properly moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. K, item K, uh, item F5, Business.
I move that we approve the Business items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item F6, Pupil Personnel Services.
I move that we approve the Pupil Personnel Services items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. We're going to move over to M, opposing I. items. We have a resolution for a walk-on item that's called a takeover agreement regarding the vestibule, and I'm going to read the motion to the resolution and then ask for a motion. Be hereby resolved that the Greenberg Central School District Board of Education approves a takeover agreement between the district and United States Fire Insurance Company dated March 21st, 2025, and it authorizes the board president to sign the agreement on the board's behalf. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Sorry.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Can, can you read that date again? Is this supposed to be today's date? The motion, is this supposed to be today's date? You said the 21st.
Must the effective date of the agreement.
Okay. I just wanted to double-check.
Yeah, that's when I think they signed it.
Okay.
The United States Fire Insurance Company.
The surety, yeah.
Okay. So this is in order to get the vestibule done?
Yes.
For clarity. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. Decision. So hopefully, the vestibule will be done soon. Is there any other new business? Hearing none. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We are over, done. It's 12:37 AM. Good night.